I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any additions or corrections to the minutes that's presented? Okay, then they will stand as read. Moving on to item four, this is an open forum. This is where we give anybody who would like to ask any questions regarding the agenda or anything else that we might be interested in. So if you could limit your comments or questions to about five minutes. And as usual, any information regarding personnel cannot be addressed in an open meeting. Anyone have anything they'd like to say? Well, I do, well, I want to welcome our two new board members. Nice to see you, of course.
It's your last time sitting in the crowd, though. Breaks over.
Okay, moving on to agenda changes. And I'm going to suggest that if you take a look at what's in new business in order to move things along a little bit, there's information here that we don't really need. You have a new business, so I'm going to ask that item J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, and R be moved to the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, motion carried. I want to keep that. Yeah, I want to say thank you.
No, I just meant to add it to the agenda.
Right, to the new business, not the consent. Okay, moving on to recognitions. And tonight, we are pleased to have four tenure appointments. So we would like to congratulate Jennifer Henyon, and Lindsay Merrill, and Lindsay Caston-Huber, and Joshua Honkley. That's true, we probably should fully applaud, we should probably. So, any emotions?
Is there an opportunity for discussion?
Late, so late, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed or in extension, motion carried anonymously and welcome. And we also have to... I'm not too sure the word "celebrate" is accurate, but "thank", several retired retirees. And that would be Wendy Kovach, who was a high school nurse for 15 years of service, Anita Miller, our keyboard specialist, for 10 years of service, Donald Miller, who's a maintenance worker for 10 years of service, and Patricia Reifert for 20 years of service. And that's a lot of service to be doing. So we wish you all in your next journey, and we will miss you. So, thank you very much. I'm beginning to feel abandoned. Next, there are two board members who have retired. One is Frank Rossi, who has nine years of service, and John White with 12 years of service. And they are leaving us, and we will miss them. So thank them both very much, wherever you are, Frank, John. Say hi. And I don't think we need a motion to accept that, no.
We should, I'd at least like to take a moment to recognize their, not only their years of service, but certainly their service as board president, which Jane can attest to is no easy job. And during Frank's tenure as board president, I know that he helped institute the committee process that we have for board members and working with the administration, that's been a big help. And certainly, John White's 12 years of service, John was instrumental in getting our pre-K program up and running. So I think those should, at least like to note those two valuable contributions that both of these gentlemen have made.
And last, incredibly, we're going to say goodbye tonight to Mr. Michael McGuire, who's been with us for five years, who has brought us through lots of interesting times, Mr. McGuire. And it is with his leadership that I think that we have arrived at a point in time when our district is in better shape. I think we have a better handle on various and sundry things that have happened in the past. And I was trying to narrow down the list of things that we've accomplished under Mr. McGuire's leadership, and it's very hard, because there's been a lot. Not including capital projects, not including adding new programs, including finding a really, really competent and capable administrative staff. So, Michael, thank you.
Can I just reply that it's been an honor to serve in a community that values education so much? I've served in communities where the children were just as needy, but they didn't get the services or the support of their community for lots of reasons, because all parents care. But here, it's unique, it's special. And you'll hear once in a while the magic of Truanceburg. It's very real, even though it's kind of hard to see sometimes. So it's been an honor, and I've been very grateful.
Well, thank you. And we will certainly miss you. But we also leave the district in the very, very capable hands of Kimberly Bell. Ms. Bell?
If I had a gallon, I'd throw it.
Right, so, welcome, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to presentations. A healthy use survey, I believe that would be. Yes, that's your cue, right?
It is.
Good evening, everyone. As most faces in here are familiar to me, but I will introduce myself. My name is Jennifer Astasimans, and I am the coordinator of the Youth Development Program at TST Bosse's, as well as the Regional Dignity Act Coordinator. So I'm very excited to be here today to talk to you about our Community State Care Survey that students in both Truanceburg and the TST Bosse's region took in the fall. So I wanted to just take a minute to give you a little bit of information about what the survey is. Some of you may be familiar, some of you may not. John gets my million emails, and Astas Josh, about can you please help us? We need this schedule, we need these dates, and always come through without any problem. So the Community State Care Survey is, I love it. It's amazing, because we get to hear directly from our students. It's one of the few times that we hear their voice, and they have that voice. And it gives us so much amazing information about the lives of our students. So it looks not only at their substance use and kind of attitude around alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. I'll say ATOG, that's what that stands for. But also their experience in school and in the community. Looks at risk and protective factors, so that also includes their relationship with their peers and their families. So we really get a kind of full picture of the lives of our youth. We began surveying students in the TST Bosse's region in 2008. And every two years, we give the survey since that time. So what's really exciting now is that we can look back and look at trends and look at how we kind of compare. And we can also follow like a cohort. When we, you know, when they take it in eighth grade, we can see their numbers in 10th and 12th. And so that's really exciting, because it can give us a lot of information. And it can make a lot of sense, because sometimes we're like, I know that class. All right, that makes perfect sense. So that can be really exciting. We did survey students grade seven through 12. Previously, in past years, we included sixth grade, but we found that it was just, it was really too much for the sixth graders. It's really kind of long, and they didn't always get through it. And we didn't really get, it was kind of really baseline data, because thankfully, they're not using it at that point. This year, 4,447 students took the survey in the TST Bosse's region. So we had an 82% participation rate, which we are very excited about. And here at Truanceburg, 404 students completed that with an 83% participation rate, which I applaud you all, that's actually come up. I think it was about 75% last time. So we are very thankful to you for your commitment to this survey. So we get a lot of questions as far as how reliable is this survey? Or how do we know it's really accurate? So there's a number of things that we put in place to try to make the data as reliable as possible. The first thing is that the survey is given anonymously. We don't put their names on it, we don't want to know. It gives them an opportunity to kind of really answer. They cross-check answers for consistency. So some of the kids are sometimes like, they're asking the same questions over and over. And they do, in some ways, they just reward them. But that allows us, like, if they've answered, we can see the consistency throughout to help validate that data. They also throw some trick questions in there. They like to throw in fake drugs here and there to see if students are like, yeah, I took that this weekend. That tells us, eh, probably not. And at the very end, it actually asks them, how honest were you? And they can say, very honest, not honest at all. And so based on that is whether or not we will use this. We use pride surveys, so they automatically will go through and look for these things and remove any surveys that they don't believe are accurate. So this year, we disallowed 170 surveys throughout the region. And that was about 4% of the surveys that were completed. So, not too bad. I'm going to start by talking about risk and protective factors. So protective factors are any of those things that really buffer a young person's experience with risk. We also call it, often make it or them, called assets. So it's also helps how they, the impact of a risk or a behavior on them. And our goal, protective factors, obviously. The more protective factors a student has, the less likely they are to engage in risk behavior. So we see, when we're talking about protective factors, it's on, it's not a percentage, it's they actually calculate a number. So the national norm is 50. For the TST Bosse's region, our norm is 54. For Truanceburg, you guys, your norm is 56. So, which is very exciting. And it's also five points higher than it was in 2014. So that's phenomenal to see those protective factors. We want that number to be as high as possible. Eight on the 10 protective factors for Truanceburg were above the national norm of 50. Our top three protective factors are belief in moral order, social skills, and school opportunities for pro-social involvement. And as you can see, all of those have increased since 2014, and rather significantly. School opportunities for pro-social involvement went from a 54 to a 64. So we're seeing really significant increases, which is very exciting. Good job. Okay, so I did want to take a minute. Students really recognize that there's an opportunity to be involved in these pro-social activities. So these would be like athletics, and music, and art, and things like that. One of the things that we noticed is that their perception of a reward for that participation is actually pretty significantly lower. They say, yes, we have this opportunity to do these things, but the reward is lower. And that's consistent from 2010, 2012, and 2014. So you can see across the board, looks at 2014 and 2016 data, that students definitely recognize that those opportunities are there, but their perception of the rewards is lower. So something to consider, more thinking about that. And there's a number of things that can contribute to that. But I thought that was an interesting point. Other questions that determine school rewards is, I feel safe at school. 95% of middle school students this year said they feel safe at school, which is fabulous. 86.4% of ninth through 12th graders. And overall, 89.4% of students' grades, seventh through 12th, at Truanceburg feel safe at school. And as you can see, that was a significant increase, especially at the middle school. Another question, my teacher notices when I'm doing a good job and lets me know about it. It's pretty consistent across the board, between 71 and 72 for all grade levels, which is great. So we're seeing about three quarters of our students are saying yes. And we also saw an increase between 2014 and 2016 data here. My teachers praise me when I work hard at school. At the middle school level, about 59%. At ninth through 12th grade, about 50%, overall, 53%. I, wait, there's a method to my best command. I point out these two questions for a specific reason. One is awesome, that we recognize our students when they're doing well, as we should. But I think we also want to think about when we're working with our teachers, is thinking about, there are some students who are going to work really, really hard, and their definition of doing well, right, may be a little different than how we view it. Not every student is going to be an A student. So we also want to really think about the fact that we're thinking about giving them the skills of perseverance and working hard and recognizing the struggles that they're making. So for some students, a C is equal to an A for another student. And we're thinking about that. My school lets my parents know when I have done something well. About 53.2% at the middle school, 34.4% grades ninth through 12. Overall, district-wide, it's 37.5. This is pretty consistent across the county. This is one where we generally see lower numbers. They're almost always higher at the middle school than they are at the high school. I would hazard a guess, they would be even higher at the elementary school, because we see things change. But also something to keep in mind when we're often thinking about that communication between school and home. I know when I work with districts, that's kind of the one place they want to kind of figure out how to beef that up. And part of that can just be thinking about communicating that positive. I always joke when I'm working with districts, like, when you, your phone rings and you see the school's number, what do you think? My kid is sick, or my kid is in trouble, right? Those are the two things they call into mind.
So they're lunch money.
Or they're in trouble, yeah. So, or lunch money, right? What are those three things? And so thinking about, how do we change that shift so that becomes exciting, right? And it's not like a fearful, like, okay, do I have someone throwing up? Or do I have to go sit in the principal's office? Not that you guys aren't lovely, but you know, it's not always our favorite places, moms and dads. So we also want to talk about risk factors. So these are conditions that increase the likelihood that a young person is going to engage in high-risk behavior, such as drug use, delinquency, dropping out of school, violence, those types of things. So for this, we actually, unlike protective factors, right, we want the number to be lower, not higher. So again, the national norm is 50. For the TST Bosse's region, our norm is 42. In Truanceburg, it's at 41. And we've seen a five-point drop since 2014. So it's super exciting that we're seeing our protective factors going up and our risk factors going down. All of the risk factors are below the national norm, which is very exciting. The top three risk factors, so the ones with a high score, are community disorganization, parental attitudes favorable towards antisocial behavior, and community transition and mobility. I do want to know the community transition and mobility. That is consistent throughout our region. As many of you know, we often have families who are kind of going from community to community to community. And so we see that pretty consistently. They were at Ratten last year, and they're at Truanceburg this year, and now we're going to Draven. And so that's something that we see fairly commonly within our region.
Jane, what's the definition of community disorganization?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I don't have my cheat sheet with me. So can I get back to you with an answer?
I actually have, I will set out, I don't know, set out coordinates. There is a breakdown of what questions from the survey make up each of the different things. And I usually have that with me, I apologize if they're great. So, let's talk about our classroom experience a little bit, thinking about instruction. So one question is, how often do you feel that the schoolwork you are assigned is meaningful and important? So they break it down by almost always, often, sometimes, seldom, never. So I went through all of the grade levels, because I thought it was interesting to check out. As you can see, the majority of those are often sometimes. I found it kind of interesting that the younger kids, and I'm sorry, this is much darker on my computer, I'm going to show you on here, so I apologize if the numbers are in the dark. Almost always, we see pretty high for seventh, eighth, ninth. And then it's interesting to watch it kind of decrease, and then go up on the other side. So I think that's, you know, something to think about. How interesting are most of your courses to you? Very interesting and stimulating, quite interesting, fairly interesting, slightly dull, very dull, where we would expect them to be, right? Quite interesting, thoroughly interesting, makes up the ball. How important do you think the things you are learning in school are going to be for you later in life? So we have very important, quite important, fairly important, slightly important, not important at all. Do they really break it down? Those seventh graders are like, this, yes! This is what we're going to need! This is my favorite one. Now, thinking back over the last year in school, how often did you try to do your best work in school? Look at that, almost always, right? That's phenomenal. Often and almost always, the bulk of our students, whether they're identifying that they're engaged or not engaged, and how they feel, they're still saying they're trying their best work. I think that says some amazing things about, I say our, like, this is my community. I don't really get much, but a little bit. I think that says some amazing things about our students, that they are that committed to their schoolwork. Let's talk about alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use. Okay, so this is ATOG, again, alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use, over time. So when we ask students, we talk about 30-day use, we say within the last 30 days. So the survey is taken at the end of October. So that's kind of the, you know, end of September through October. This is going to be a time period. We don't do it right at the beginning of the school year, because we don't want grassroots to skew our numbers. And we do it at the same time every year. So just so you know, that's not factoring that in. So this is, you know, the last 30 days, so end of September, beginning of, to end of October. So 2000, what's awesome about this is we can see that we are trending down, right? So we've got 2008 to 2016 data. And almost overwhelmingly, alcohol, marijuana, cigarettes, and smokeless tobacco are trending down, which I think is really exciting. We did see a couple of little spikes in 2014, but from there, we see use going down, which is very, very exciting. So this is 30-day use of alcohol by grade level. Again, this is over time. I think it's phenomenal, if you look at 12th grade, right, for 2014, you had 54% of students. And this year, it was down to 21%.
One of the things that we talked about when we were reviewing this as a staff is the comparison of 10th grade to 12th grade. Because if you go back to the last survey, 10th graders, that's this year's 12th graders. So when we look and see 21.8 in 10th grade to 21.7 in 12th grade, that's the same cohort. And to see that there's not more kids drinking when they become seniors. That group is staying stable, and their opinions are staying consistent. And that's really, really important.
And what's interesting, too, if you look even so that there, in eighth grade, would have been 2012, there wasn't even that significant of a... There was definitely a core group there. That, and we just saw a slight increase of other students using. So I think that, that's very telling. So we did, so this is just kind of a comparison slide to think about how Truanceburg compares to TST Bosse's region, as well as national data. We get our national data from the Monetary and the Futures Survey. Just so that you know, they only survey students in eighth, 10, and 12. I did forget to put the data up there, we just don't have any for seven, nine, and 11. But we think it's valuable to kind of, to look at those things. Slightly higher than the region in 7th grade, on par at 8th grade. 9th grade, we're pretty significantly lower than the region. We are a little bit higher at 10th grade. There is something with that 10th grade cohort that you will notice when we go throughout, that their numbers are higher. Lower at 11th grade, and pretty significantly lower in 12th grade than the region. So, and we're lower than all of the, no, except for 10th grade, national average, national data. So, why do we look at this? Why does this matter? One of the things that we know is that the younger students start drinking, the more likely they are to develop dependency issues later on. So we actually know if a student starts drinking before the age of 14, they're four times more likely to have an alcohol development, alcohol dependence later on. So our goal is, like, the later, right, the onset of abuse, the more likely our students are able to be healthy and hopefully not have to struggle with those dependency issues. So it's good to see them putting it off. We have known, we have noticed as a region, our age of onset is actually getting older, like that, right? It used to be, we saw between the 8th and 9th grade here, and now we see you starting between 9th and 10th grade. So we just hope we can kind of keep moving that up, right? So the older and older they get. Thinking about cigarette use over time. Significantly, I mean, numbers, as you can see, are very low right now, and they've continued to decrease. So that's pretty exciting to see. Comparatively, again, that 10th grade likes to pop up there. But we're below the national averages, and for the most part. For 7th, 8th, and 9th grade, sorry, giving my numbers confused. We're below the regional average. Slightly above for 11th grade, and slightly above for 12th grade. But as a whole, our tobacco, our cigarettes, numbers are low. That does not include, like, e-cigarettes or vaping. That's one of the things that we are working, actually, pride to include for the next time we do the survey, or think about, we do 10 additional questions at the end that you can specify for your region. And we want to make sure that's included, because we certainly know those numbers are skyrocketing, because there's presumably a lack of risk involved with that. Marijuana use over time. So we're looking at our trends, kind of up and down. But right now, we're on a, we're trending downward. Again, we see that 10th grade, again, that cohort there has the highest numbers. But overall, we're trending down, which is exciting. We went from 2014, 12th graders went from 37.8%, we're down to 20%. So it's a pretty significant decrease of students who are using at the 12th grade level. And that tends to be where we see the peak of student use, is that 12th grade class. Comparative, just so you know, as a region, we are almost always right on par with national or above national numbers. As far as marijuana use, our area is pretty, it's probably not shock to anyone, but our marijuana use is generally pretty high. Comparatively, we're doing pretty well. Again, that 10th grade is the one place where we see that we're above the national and regional data. I did throw in some pharmaceutical use, because I thought that would be important, given current trends and thinking about opioids and heroin and things like that. So as a district, we're seeing really low numbers. I think 11th grade is the highest, 7.4%. And again, comparatively, we're doing pretty well. Again, the 11th grade sticks out there as far as pharmaceutical use. Before I click to that, everybody doing okay? This is like a lot of my numbers and charts, but there's no other cool way to roll this data out than to just kind of go through it. Perception of risk, this is one of my favorite things to look at. So this basically asks students, like, how dangerous do you think this is? And so students identify that there's either a moderate or great risk. I think this is like a glowing review for the Public Health Campaign when it comes to cigarettes and tobacco, because across the board, kids are like, yep, high risk, right? We have 100% of 12th graders recognizing that there is moderate to great risk. Alcohol, it's kind of where we would expect it to be, right? 8th and 9th grade, we're getting those health classes, right? So you can see that it's working. And then we're down to about 75%, right, as they get older. It's always a challenge with alcohol, because we know it's much more, it's very socially acceptable to use, and it's hard to explain to students that you can use, like, some people can use alcohol safely, and some people cannot. And what that looks like, and all of those differences. So their perception of risk. What's extremely fascinating is the marijuana. Because by the time they get to 12th grade, less than half of students perceive that there is moderate to great risk involved with marijuana. So we're continuing to watch that and watch that trend. Certainly with medical marijuana, the possible legalization of marijuana, and all of that conversation that goes along with it, that's impacting that for us. The adolescent brain is still developing. The brain is not fully developed until the age of 25. So anytime you're adding a drug or another chemical to it, you're impacting the developing brain. And so that is our focus. We're not making a claim on whether it should or shouldn't be legal. We just want to think about the consequences on our youth. We just want to think about the, the consequences on our youth. And with the developing brain, there's always gonna be a consequence. Okay, availability, this is another fun one. So this is like, how hard is it to get these different substances? Um, so, these students are saying that they identified that it's very, um, sort of are very easy to obtain. As you can see, it is easier to obtain, according to 12th graders, marijuana than it is to get alcohol. This is consistent in our region, by the way, this is not just Jermansburg, um, but... So we have about 50% of 10th and 12th, oh, sorry, 11th graders, um, saying it's, it's pretty easy and very, pretty to very easy to obtain marijuana. So I, I would think that's an interesting one. Depressive symptoms, we're making a shift. Does anybody have any questions related to the alcohol stuff before we switch to the next one? Um, so we asked some really kind of direct questions that have related to mental health. Sometimes I feel that life is not worth it. 26% of students, um, this is 7th through 12th, identified, um, yes. At times, I think I am no good. 34.4% of students identified, yes. All in all, I'm inclined to think I'm a failure. 24% of students. This is one that gets me. In the past year, have you felt depressed or sad most days, even if you felt, okay, sometimes? We had 31.9% of students say yes.
So, how, how does that compare to the national or the TST, or is that the next slide coming up?
It's not the next slide, but it was my, you read my mind.
I've had years of doing this.
I know.
Way back to your Lincoln High School days.
He's like holding that.
He is, he's been waiting. For those of you who don't know, he's my father, so he has to raise a kid. Everybody knew that?
If he keeps up like this, he might not be for much longer.
We'll see. Um, sadly, uh, I hate to, it's sad to report this, but this is on par for our region and our national data. We found that about a third of all high school students, um, are identifying, um, with these depressive symptoms and mental health. So, and that's consistent nationwide.
Anecdotally, I will share that we are, when I talk with principals around the region and, because I have a number of close connections in the other high schools, and consistently, we're all talking about the noticeable increase in anxiety disorders. Kids that are requiring tutoring because they're too anxious to come to school. Uh, kids are on medication for anxiety, it is, it is noticeable increases over the last five years. Significantly, just, again, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, this backs that up, but it is, it is a distinct notice thing, something that we're just all seeing and all across the board in high school.
And how does that correlate with drug addiction? We can't, based on the data that we have, we can't, we can, we see that students who have depressive symptoms are also using, but there, we can't, I can't say that they're using because they're depressed or they're depressed because they're using.
So this instrument doesn't go into the, the...
It doesn't go, no. We can make a correlation to see that those two things are happening simultaneously, but we can't tell which, which causes or, we can't make that correlation. Which I have to say is pretty, from my work with students, anytime I had students who were using, it was usually as a coping mechanism for whatever mental health thing that they were trying to deal with. So, not that that's the, why every student uses, but that's fairly common. School climates, alright. So, this is middle school specific. Um, there is an adult, I, um, that I can trust and who can help me with my problems. 66.2% of students said yes, um, we love to see that. And we also love that there's a 30% increase, um, from 2014. Good job, Josh, thank you. Um, so we see those numbers are significantly higher, right? In general, I feel welcomed and appreciated by school adults. Went from 30% up to 62.1%. In general, school staff are available immediately to deal with her appropriate behaviors. Went from 23 to 44. Um, and in general, school rules are fairly enforced, so we also saw an increase up to 51%. I am going to say the last two questions are student perspectives. So we have to keep that in mind when we're thinking about, um, students don't always grasp that fair doesn't always mean equal, right? Like, uh, so there is, we have to take into consideration student perspective. Um, and also thinking about, um, hurtful behaviors. Um, sometimes that's difficult because we all know, staff, we're doing everything we can, but that's not always immediate enough, so we need to throw that perspective in there. Look at the same data for high school. There's an adult I can trust and I can go to with my problems. Um, again, we saw, um, increases across the board to 63%. In general, I feel welcomed and appreciated by school adults at 59.8%. I do want to give you a little perspective on this one. Obviously, we want to judge what we view as what we want to be as a school, but I do want to give you, regionally, we're at about 44% of students identify that they feel welcome and appreciated by school adults. I might harp on that one just a little bit in every training I ever do, so. Sorry, guys, you're gonna hear it again. Um, in general, school staff are available immediately to deal with hurtful behaviors, 45.9%. And in general, school rules are fairly enforced, again, 45.9%. Okay, so, 46.9% of middle schoolers and 44% of high schoolers reported that in general, students treat each other with respect. Um, I pointed this out very specifically because in 2014, those numbers were 24.6% and 39%. So we've seen a huge increase, um, in how students view, um, respect, um, amongst their peers, which is super exciting. Or in your face, just like, saying something, but I'm not sure what.
Just wondering about the impact of social media on these things we've been talking about that I don't, I don't know if the survey asked. Um, is that something that's going to get incorporated in the future? Especially when you talk about the mental health issues based on the screening, the self-screening this year.
Right. The impact is significant, absolutely. Um, and I think we, we'll see in a minute, we do have some questions related to cyberbullying, um, as, as far as like hurtful behaviors online. Um, what I always find bizarre, and I, and have yet to figure out how to tease the question out to more accurately depict what's happening, is that a good 75% of the calls that I get from districts related to the dignity act or we need support, we need help, has something to do with cyberbullying? Yet when you, I'm gonna jump ahead, oops, here we go. Um, yeah, we see that students, this is very last question over here, been embarrassed, insulted, harassed, or threatened on the internet posting your text message. Our numbers are really low, and that's consistent across the region, like, you know, 11, 12%. But it's not matching, so I don't know if we have like specific students who are, and we're dealing with that issue over and over and over again, and it's not reaching the general population of our students. I have yet, we're still working on how to tease.
Again, anecdotally, I will tell you that we deal with cyberbullying a lot at the high school, but it's consistently this group of kids. It's not like it's, everybody's involved, it's usually a small pocket of kids. You know, we, it's the drama crowd, not, not this, not the musical crowd.
Right.
It's just, it's high school drama. And it's like the 9th, the 9th grade, 10th grade, small group of kids, and we deal with that group of kids perpetually.
So it is, okay, because I've been trying to figure out, because I'm like, I just have to call, I get all the time, and every time, the data is gonna back me up on this, and it never does. It's always like 11, 12%, I'm like, that is not, people are calling me. Um, so it makes it a little bit more challenging, really, we need to deal with this. The data's not showing. Um, so, so that's interesting, but social media is a part of, it's just all encompassing. It is their lives, it's the norm for our youth. Um, and so, thinking about that and just the impact of that culture. There's actually studies that show that kids are drinking and using drugs less because they're on social media. So, we're kind of changing one addiction for, for another. I'm not sure what that really says, but there is a lot of data to show that. So that's an interesting, um, an interesting point. Um, just this, some of this other thing, the question is in the last 30 days in my school, so someone has said something hurtful. Um, I want to very clearly, um, point out that this does not mean that a student is being, you know, we're not saying that 31% of your students are being bullied, okay? Someone has said something hurtful, name, call, and put down does not equate to a bullying behavior. It could, but it doesn't mean that it does, so I want to be specific about that, um, because if we don't want to misuse that term. Um, has physically bullied me, that, that one is specific. You see those numbers are very low. Has done something to exclude me, um, so, and we're between 14 and 18% and then, and then the cyberbullying. That was a whole lot of data in a really short period of time. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question for our administrator, or, go ahead.
Uh, and that is that I've been on the board for many years and have looked at these surveys for many years. And this is honestly the best collation of the data and, uh, a great description of exactly what is happening with our students in the past. Sometimes the data's been very difficult to parse out, and the presentation a little confusing. This is absolutely wonderful. Thank you so much.
No problem.
A world of difference.
Oh, I'm so glad, I have to say.
I really appreciate it.
There might have been, over the last 10 years, somebody sitting at the dinner table saying, can I please, can I please? Um, because I just think, I think this is so important because we're actually, we're hearing from our students, like, they're telling us their experience. Um, so, I might be a little passionate about it.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I will also, I'm gonna preempt one of the questions that I'm gonna guess that you guys have, and that is, how are we sharing this data with the staff and the students in the school? So, um, Jen was kind enough to give me a slideshow, a variation of this slideshow that I shared with the high school staff in May. And then, I'm working with our team to create a presentation of this for the students. The debate that we are having is whether or not do you share it in a big group? Do you do it in classes, small groups? And so we're working with student services to try to figure out what's the best way to do it.
A small group!
Along with our, our health teacher. So we're, yeah, we're coming up with some plans for how to share this with the kids. Because it really is important. I did, last year, I did a presentation with every single group, like, in small groups in social studies, after our little incident, um, and we used data from that survey from the, the previous administration. So I want the kids to be able to see this administration so that they see comparatively, because the kids remember that, they still remember that, that conversations.
And what's awesome is you can tap into your students from the team leadership conference who went through the data too, and have them help you, that would be, now that I'm telling you to do it, Josh. Cool idea, maybe?
You can see it runs in the family, huh?
The middle school, our counseling team has showed the data with our teachers, and they also then took it to our PBIS team, and they're using the data to determine how they're going to, um, support the students throughout the coming year in terms of whether it's positive kind words. And we've got students taking initiative to have positive campaigns within the middle school without the adults encouraging them. We have leave a kind word on the girls' bathroom mirrors. They're, they, a group of students approached the dean and said, we did something in the bathroom, and we want you to know about it before you look on the cameras. And they had left a pad of Post-it notes and pencils so they could write something positive and leave it on the mirror for another girl who comes into the, the bathroom. It's just covered with positive things. So, we have students, we also had a group of students from the scouts, the Girl Scouts, go through and put positive things on every student's locker earlier this winter. So there, there is a lot of kind hearts in the middle school, both in the staff and the students looking to raise the, the awareness that everybody wants something nice to look forward to in the course of their day.
I also want to compliment you as well, in that, um, I worked with the, um, the counseling team from the middle school this year, and they actually, they did a shortened version of a survey for 5th and 6th graders. So they have full data for their whole building, not just their 7th and 8th graders. Um, Survey Monkey, I think is what we used in the end, but we went through, the, the questions are similar. We just pulled out, you know, I think it was 10 to 15 that were relevant, um, for the younger students so we could have some consistent data. So I want to compliment you for doing that, I think that's awesome to get that data through your whole building, so.
So there were pretty significant jumps in terms of kids' perceptions about feeling welcome in, in school. And since both of you gentlemen have been principals, Josh for a little shorter period of time, so what do you attribute that to? Is it, is there something specific that you're doing with your staff or with your kids that suddenly, from 10th grade to 12th grade, they, they feel more welcome when you've been in the leadership position all of those years?
I would attribute it to the staff. I, I mean, I believe that we have a culture where the teachers really do, they, they like the kids, and they enjoy being around them, and they let them know that. You know, when we did the promotional video for the superintendent search a couple of months ago, one of the best parts about that was hearing the kids say that they like their teachers because their, their teachers treat them like they're adults. They, they have, you know, an engaging connection with them, and they make things meaningful, like, it's a meaningful relationship. And that really just comes down to the, the people that we have in this building taking an interest in the kids and their lives and having those conversations, so.
Wish I could say something different about the middle school, but it's true. We have fantastic staff who just are interested in the kids. And it's those little tiny moments, it's not a big campaign where we are, you have to go through and mark off that you said 12th grade things to a kid. It is just truly that, I think we've had that critical mass though too, where we have lots of positive role models amongst our staff. For when we get the new staff members in, that's just how we do things around here. And they just follow, they follow suit, so.
And it starts with the pregame. I like the, uh, I like the idea of sharing it with kids in part of building a plan with them. Um, because I think this is, this is good information for parents too. I want to say a couple of years ago when you presented this, it was, um, it stuck with me, I think at the time when I was a counselor, that if parents disapprove of behaviors, the chance of students participating in drug use and alcohol use significantly, it was significant.
There's a whole, you got, um, I, Michael has a copy, um, I didn't include that. I think I've gone way over the time that I was actually allotted anyway.
Keep going.
So I'm sorry, um, so I didn't include everything. But every, every time we do a survey, we do what's called, Parents Make a Difference, um, kind of fact sheet. And Michael has a copy, and we do it specifically for each different. And we know if you know where your students are, you know who their friends are, and you set clear rules around drugs and alcohol, they're significantly less likely to use. Um, it's unbelievable, uh, the difference you can make. Uh, and so, one of the things that we've found, um, the wording's a little, um, a little tricky, um, because it's like sets clear rules and doesn't, like, not, it's like a double negative. Uh, because some parents just don't say anything. Uh, it's not like they're like, hey, high five, let's go have a beer. It's just there's no message sent whatsoever. So being able to set those very clear, um, rules is phenomenal. And we see when students have, um, two or more friends who are using, they're like significantly more likely to use versus students who have like male friends who are using, they're, they're barely in use. Um, so I can make sure, I think Michael has that, but I can't reset that.
Yeah, we'll post it on the website. It's also in the middle school virtual backpack, the short sheets there too.
Do you present to parents in other districts that information?
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, in fact, I did, um, I did like a community night, um, at Lansing, uh, for the middle and high school. So they had like 35 parents turn out, which is like in a parent world, I think you all know, like, holy cow. Yeah, so, um, different districts do it different ways, but more than happy. In the past, County Youth Services has done a presentation for the community, um, so. We can talk about what you did, or, or I can do it, I'd be happy to do it.
Is there a specific grade level or that, that you have found that works better? When you're talking to parents? It seems like saying, like 5th grade or 6th grade seems like it would be a good time to start that, but then when you're talking about setting clear rules and expectations, it seems like it's a little late if you're not already doing that.
Um, I, I think the earlier, the better. The earlier we can get that message, in case you haven't noticed. If you ask my daughter, she'll be like, why don't you drink till, because my brain's not developed yet? And like, she, she knows the script written, she lives with me, and I'm sorry, Don, please relax, and you have her and help us. Um, but the earlier we start the message, the better off that we are. These are my rules. So certainly thinking, you know, I think that transition into the middle school, you guys start in 5th grade, that's a perfect time to start saying, when we start sending these clear messages, because you're thinking, oh, they're 10. Well, yeah, that's good. So by the time they get to 15, 16, and they're out of that party and says, hmm, try this, they know that this is the role that, I, and my thing is too, you can always, blame my mother. Like, you don't want to do something, you'd be like, my mom would kill me if she found out. Because one, I would, and two, it's easier to put it off. Um, but you know, the, like, giving them strategies and thinking about those things and, and talking about them. I think those are all important. So the earlier, the better, I'd say. And also just helping parents understand that it's important. Um, I think one of the challenges we run into when we start thinking about 11th and 12th graders is a lot of parents have the perspective of like, well, if they're doing it at home, they're not with me, and they're safe, um, so there's some challenges involved with that, right? The later, the better, right? And social hosting, and there's a, that's a whole other, um, thing that we could go down, but some of it is really cons... But some of it is really comes from a place of good intent. Like, I can change them to do it responsibly and things like that. When really, we just don't want them to use.
Have you ever run into a cultural bias on some of this information?
As in?
As in France, England, Germany, Spain.
Well, there's always, I haven't personally.
They don't have quite the same attitude toward what we would refer to as underage drinking. In other words, it's not put over here as a, it's, they're expected to behave responsibly.
Right. There are, you know, I haven't personally ever had anyone challenge me specifically on alcohol. I've had people challenge me, I think, at the Ithaca community. We often get very, very much challenged when it comes to marijuana, and the use of marijuana. Certainly, we always want to be respectful of people's cultures and, and that. We're just coming at it from like, kind of scientifically, this is what we know, and, and thinking about how we can help youth be safe. But certainly, we're never gonna tell a parent that they, they can't have glass wine with their child if that's their culture and their choice. But just thinking about how we can help them do it safely.
Sometimes it can be confusing with kids who.
Well, that's the, we do prevention lessons, actually, in the elementary school. And that's one of the biggest challenges when it comes to alcohol, is because it can be used safely. And sometimes it is a part of their culture experience, their religious experience, all those things. And so how do we help balance that out for students and help them understand, especially at young ages? Yeah?
I just wanted to comment on the positive trend we saw with the post-social behavior. Although this is a middle and high school survey, and much credit goes to the middle school and high school culture. I think also credit is due to the elementary school and the community council program, which I think is bringing students into the middle school with a solid foundation of what it means to respect each other and how to resolve conflicts. So as a parent with children in two school buildings, it's, it's good to see it moving in the way it is.
I would agree with you one hundred percent, and I'd go with you. We'll see that with elementary school and, and your PBIS model and your ABCs, and I do an excellent job preparing that. I would second that.
It was sweet. On one of the kindergarten graduation bios that they filled out today, and I was two children wrote. And the first line that said, "In kindergarten, I learned to..." Two different children wrote, "care." Very sweet.
Well, I think that with the elementary school, guys have a fairly decent culture and program of setting limits on acceptable behavior. So, while one would certainly hope that with your darn little second graders, you're not worried about bringing a beer to school. But they do, I have three boys, I know, they engage a behavior that is unacceptable. And if it's, if it's discouraged or dealt with. And then that idea of certain behavior unacceptable, not something that, that you engage in, sort of follows through naturally when you get to some of the more serious things, drugs, alcohol. So, yeah, I agree with you. I think that it's, it takes the entire district to be able to.
Especially when we think about, when we go back to our risk and protective factors, right? You're creating protective factors for your students every day by giving them those caring relationships with adults. By, you know, having those notes on the bathroom mirror, which is the coolest thing ever. So I'm gonna share that with people if that's okay. It's a great model of things to do. That it's student-generated is even better, right? You've created a culture where students feel safe enough to do that, to say, hey, we're gonna support our friends. Like, it's awesome. So I think, I mean, all of those things are building those protective factors for our students so that they're less likely, like, I don't need to go party on the weekend because I have this awesome environment where I can, and we have so many opportunities for athletics and drama and, you know, music. We're a very blessed community. So I think, I think that's exciting, so. But the great work is. Any other questions?
Well, it's nice to see that the trends are going down where they're supposed to be going now. And going up where they're supposed to be going up. And I think that that has probably a vast majority, thanks to the administrative staff and all teams. So, thank you. Great. I see one.
So, thank you. And I'd be happy to, to share this if anyone would like the presentation. I need more time to look at numbers than a couple minutes. So if you'd like, I'd be happy to share it as well.
Thank you. I give you the official thank you.
And now we're gonna take a slight break for a different kind of thing. I thought that might be a good idea for us to be able to talk, or not talk, but listen to what Jen had to say. And if you would join us in the foyer, I believe we'd have. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Yeah, one quick foundation. The foundation.
Glasses need to be changed. I thought it was going to be Kimberly's presentation with number ten. Much rather hear from the foundation. Thank you.
Can I just put a frame around this? This is Megan Williams and Molly Buck. They're representing the foundation. And as you know, the foundation is one of those gems of our school district and our community. People who give umpteen hours of their time just on behalf of our teachers and our students. So it's just part of the real quality part of our school district. So, ask them to present just a couple things this evening.
Yep, thank you for letting us come tonight. We just wanted to bring you up to speed on a couple of things that we've been doing for the last year. My name is Megan, and I have a kindergartner and a second grader. And I really enjoy, this is my second year working with the foundation. I'm also involved with the PTO, so I spend a lot of time at school. Some people ask if I work here.
I'm a buck. She's the president of the PTO. She's big humble. I'm Molly Buck. I have a second grader, a kindergartner, and a sixth grader. And I've been with the foundation for three years.
So the first thing to talk about tonight is our fall grant program that we had. We had eleven grants that were funded. We gave out over five thousand dollars to a variety of projects. Two of the bigger school-based projects that we supported was a thousand dollars in support of Youth Art Month. So there were after-school workshops and weekend mural paintings, and then the art show at the high school cafeteria. Another one was the T-shirts that we helped sponsor for the Day of Service in the elementary school. So every student and every staff member, I believe, had a T-shirt. And does everybody know about this project already? So, anyway, we were excited to be, to be part of it. And then, we had grants from the school of larger amounts, and then we had smaller grants in the community to support the library storytime. And then we had one from the conservatory to support art classes. So, a total variety, but we were happy to support things across the board. We also had two events this year that we did. We did the Kids Quiz Bowl in March at Atlas. We did it the same weekend as Staff Slam, because we thought it was kind of a fun, school-spirited themed weekend. We had a great turnout from the elementary school and middle school students. It was free, and it was just a PR event and a fun thing that we wanted families to come down and take part in. We think that we will probably carry on doing that again next year. And in March, we also had the art auction at the conservatory. So this is our tenth year. We're celebrating our tenth anniversary, and we were looking for a way or an event to do that. So we decided to combine it with the art auction, which previously we had done with the art show at the high school. We decided to maybe move it to a different venue, serve some wine, attract members from the community that maybe would not have come to the cafeteria. So we had donations from students. The art teachers helped us get donations from students in all three buildings. But then we also solicited donations from community artists, and we raised thirty-five hundred dollars, which is about fifteen hundred more than we had done previously. And some of you came. We really appreciated it. I know I saw some faces that night. So, that, again, that's something that we're hoping to continue, and I think that will continue to grow and probably become our largest fundraiser going forward to help support the grants and other programs that we run.
Regarding our other core programs, we continue to fund the Kids Explore and Discover field trips, which span from pre-K to sixth grade. So a few of those field trips include the pre-K trip to the Johnson Museum of Art. The fourth grade trip to the Four Square Schoolhouse is a big hit. And tomorrow, the fifth grade's going to the Cornell Lab of Ornithology. So in addition to helping fund the field trips, we also collaborate with the PTO to, to provide each student with a book that's related to the field trip. And we also stay in touch with teachers, just to make sure that the program is integrating with what they are teaching. We also continue to fund the TruMitzburg Troubadour. And we have a student intern from the Ithaca College Writing Program who meets with students after school and gives them lessons in journalism. So interviewing, reporting, editing. And we have some issues hot off the press, volume eight for you. And the, the great thing about the Troubadour is students are being exposed to journalistic skills. And then it also makes the community aware of all the wonderful things going on in our district. As far as new initiatives, we are starting to explore some wellness and healthy eating programming. Given that we live in a community full of local farmers and food producers and food enthusiasts, we want to help support the community and the school to really encourage healthy eating both in and out of school. So stay tuned for some events in October, which is National Farm to School Month. And finally, we just want to give a big thank you to Michael McGuire. During his tenure as superintendent, he has really been part of the team, the foundation. He attends all of our monthly board meetings. He and his wife attend all of our events. He's always been very responsive and enthusiastic in the work we do. So thank you so much. So with that, we'll give you a copy of the Troubadour. And, yes, we will miss you, Michael.
Well, if you ladies would care to join us in foyer for some cake and refreshments, you will, you will have an opportunity to answer even more questions. So, let's take a quick break. We celebrate our retiree.